Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Today is Tuesday, January 14th, 2025, and I'll open our North Liberty City Council meeting. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Leibold.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Sittig.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wason.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda. There are no changes or alterations to it. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is our consent agenda. Anything on there that anyone wants to pull off and talk about separately? Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
By Wason, seconded by Smith. Any questions?
There's a lot of claims to look at.
There were. That's a good one.
Sixty pages.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is public comment. Now it's time for anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on item that's not already listed on our agenda. It's open-mic season. I'll open the public comment time. Seeing no public comment, I'll close the public comment time period. Item six, Josiah, engineers report.
Thanks, Mayor. It's pretty quiet out there on the construction front. There is work going on at the Centennial Event Center. Roof framing work still in progress. If you've been by the trusses for the event hall, you start to see those taking shape. They're continuing metal stud framing on the outer walls and starting to put up some of the sheathing and things on the side. So they are making progress around the building and also around the site for utilities. The water main connections are going in and some of the storm sewer around the building. So a little slower in the winter, but things are moving. I wanted to give you a note. I can't remember if I've updated you since. At the Freverine Road and Jasper Avenue intersection, the one we're looking at, the roundabout solution, we did work with Lynn County RAC and Corville and Tiffin to get three new stop, not stop lights, uh, streetlights up to improve visibility there at night, and those are, those are in. Better note I have for you is Freverine Road, the extension, the functional study for their, for that extension from 12th Avenue Roundabout by the junior high across the wastewater plant and over to the Corville Roundabout. Currently, we're preparing a concept statement that we're going to submit to the DOT this month. That is required for them to start a review process of that corridor, and that review process needs to be complete before any future projects can be done in that section. So we're going to get that submitted and allow them to start doing their, what's called NEPA review. They look at project impacts and estimated acquisition impacts and farmland and all that stuff, and they have to go through that process before we can have authority to like develop a project and start looking into design and impact. So we are putting that together this month. I think I mentioned before, there's an initial earmark of two and a half million, and we're looking to use that for a Phase One project, which will need to be bid through the DOT by the summer of 2026. So this would be the first step in getting that process moving. That's all I've got, Mayor, unless there's questions.
Yeah, how long does that generally take?
Evaluation process? I think what they say, when you look through the documents, is there, it's a three to four-month process, but depending on how busy they are and what's going on, it could be more or less.
Thank you.
Brian, what's Corville's role in this?
So right now, you might recall, we approved the initial conceptual design in the city. North Liberty's taken the lead on that through Shire Hattery, but Corville actually holds the 2.5 million or will hold it, so they'll, they'll take the lead on any project moving forward. We just, we're doing the conceptual piece of it. And then, moving forward, we anticipate really the same setup and hopeful that between Corville and North Liberty, we can lobby for some additional funds and, and progress this project as federal funds come, become available.
Any other questions? Good ones. Ryan, I'll turn it over to you. Item seven, city administrator report.
Okay, well, thank you and Happy New Year, everyone. And as, as promised, you had a month off, and now we're going to work you to the bone here the next few weeks. So of course, next week, the 21st, week from tonight, we have our first budget session. We'll have all the department heads in here at 5:30, and we'll walk through the operational side of the budget. And then the following week, at our regular council meeting, regular start time, we'll have a few more department heads come back where we'll talk about capital projects and larger, well, the, the capital projects that we're proposing for, for FY '26. So a couple meatier meetings coming up for sure. In addition to the budget, which we've been spending a great deal of time on, we will have some other conversations coming up, including on the 28th, we'll be talking about ADUs again, and I think I mentioned this when we met in December. Russ will, will guide us through a conversation with ADUs, and we'll actually have some, some folks who are interested in advocating for that at the meeting as well. And then in February, we're going to visit with, or have our water and wastewater engineers present to us the facility plans that they've been working on. So in a growing community like North Liberty, we need to stay on top of water and wastewater needs, and so Fox Strand has been working over the last couple of years on facility plans that we will eventually need to implement in order to stay current with DNR and EPA regulations. And I don't want to, I guess I'll say spoil alert, there's going to be some very expensive projects involved in this because that, those, both those operations are expensive to, to operate. And as we, as we grow, so does the need for capacity in both of those facilities. So that's a teaser. There certainly will be more to come, and we'll talk as much in-depth as you'd like about those two topics, about water and wastewater in February with Steve Troyer and the team from Fox Strand. That's what I have tonight, Mayor, unless there are any questions from the group.
Thanks, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? All right. Item eight is mayor's report. And I'll just overariously say, I hope you guys have a good month off and Happy New Year, and it was safe and healthy for all of you. As Ryan said, we do have a next couple of busy weeks here. I, I tell people over the holidays, they ask how things are going with the city, I say that we got a group of council members that ask a lot of great questions and are committed. You're here all, all the time, and I greatly appreciate that, those efforts out in the community. There have been and will continue to be a number of legislative updates. I know a few of you were here last week for one. If you get a chance, if your schedule allows, please set aside some time to participate in those, at least just be present for them. There's a lot happening outside of our city limits that will have impacts on what we do, some things we can and some things we can't control. So just be aware of them as, as part of our conversations. Aside from that, I don't have anything earth-shattering to report. So I'll move on to item nine, which are council reports. Any reports out from what you all that have been doing in the community over the last several weeks? Yes, sir.
Last week, the Emergency Management Agency met to work on the budget, and that's, should be set, and they'll have the hearing and work on the finalizing that February 6th. The EMA budget really is pretty flat, and it includes the joint communications budget as well. And basically, the, in, the insurance for things and the utilities were the things that were really going up. A little bit of it was salary, but a big chunk of it was the insurance and, and utilities. And then they actually added in for a building in Tiffin for storing the Emergency Management Agency equipment. And then the other thing that we're working on in there is the hazard mitigation plan, and if people are so interested, there's a public comment section on that. You just go to the Johnson County Emergency Management Agency website and slide down a bit, and there's a big press release on it, and you can look at it and stuff. It's one of the things that you have to do every, I think, five years or so to make sure we're eligible for any funding in the event of natural disasters.
Helpful. Thanks, Brian. Anyone else?
Mayor, the Better Together 2030 Awards, just a reminder, will be January 30th. Many of you like to attend that yearly and planning. Been involved in the planning for those, so January 30th. If you want more details, let me know. Think Iowa City also wrapped up the year with, look at financials, looking ahead to 2025. There's, there's a lot of exciting hosting opportunities, many of those we can't share publicly per se because they're bidding on them and such, but a lot of, from high school athletic events to college-level events in the area. And I continue to ring the bell of North Liberty with that group, letting them know that we are here, we are open for business, we can host. And I, I certainly know with conversations that continue that hosting additional things for us will really open up when the Centennial Center takes shape, and we'll see some of those partnerships develop. So it'll be exciting for those conversations in the future.
Sure. Thanks, Brian.
So yesterday, I went to the Joint Entities Meeting. There was some, a presentation about the Crandic Line and the different studies that have been done on that line. Also, someone discussed the Livable Community for Successful Aging Survey that is going to be done, or is being done in Johnson County, and for, it's for people 45 and over, and they will be, I think they're going to come here sometime. Is that right, Ryan?
Yeah, they were making their rounds, I believe, end of February or March.
Yeah. So something to watch out for. And I was one of a number of us who attended the Community Foundations Legislative Breakfast last week. That was a good event, well-attended here. Glad we were able to host.
True.
I was just going to say the same thing about the Community Foundation Legislative Breakfast. Really fun to have stuff happening here at our beautiful City Hall, and, and like Brian said, Centennial Park coming up will present a lot of opportunities for that as well. So, yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you.
For me, Mayor, just echo the, the comments on Happy New Year, but really just want to say thank you to, to a great start to the city slate events and remind folks of the upcoming Fire Nice Events that are occurring in North Liberty, as well as the Snuggie Crawl. So just want to say thank you to those. And I attended the, the preview here in City Hall, and again, thank you to everybody that that put that on. Couple other items, there was a legislative launch at Cedar Ridge to, to close out the year in 2024, so I attended that, and then also served on a leadership panel for Think Iowa City at the end of December as well. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Brian. Okay. Item 10 is our zoning ordinance, and item A is public hearing regarding proposed amendments to the zoning code. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make comment on our zoning ordinance? Seeing none, I'll pass this over to Russ for staff and planning commission recommendations.
Just real quick, this fixes an oversight in the original ordinance that was approved by city council on October 24th. It's, it's pretty minor. We just realized we require lots of divisions for, allows for townhouse lots to be on individual lots, and the process we do is you build the townhouse on a, on a lot, and then, once the building is constructed, then we subdivide in order to, to put it on the common wall so the lot line is exactly where it's supposed to be. The oversight was, it addressed lots that were already split, but it, it was like, it basically got penalized for not, for, for following our process, which was totally not our intent. So it was something we missed, and that fixes that oversight. We, the planning commission did consider this at its December 3 meeting and recommended approval unanimously.
Thank you. Any questions for Russ? Item C then is first consideration of ordinance number 2025-01, number one ordinance of the year. An ordinance amending Chapter 168 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances pertaining to residential district dimensional standards. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Park, seconded by City. Do you guys have any questions about that?
Yeah.
Tracy, quit, roll call, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11 is Solomon Part V, easement vacation, and item A is public hearing regarding proposed disposal of an easement. Anyone in the audience wishing to make comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll move to item B, and this is resolution number 2025-01, our first resolution of the year, vacating an easement being a part of the final plat for Solomon's Landing, Part V, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration for this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Who moved it down there?
Leibold.
Brian did. Got the Bryans calling this one. Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Leibold.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries. And item 12 is Green Belt Trail Part 8 rezoning, and this is also a, item A is public hearing regarding proposed rezoning. Anyone in the audience wishing to make comments on this rezoning? Seeing none, item B is staff and planning commission recommendations, Russ.
Okay, so this currently, Green Belt Trail Parts III and IV being constructed, and we anticipate a formal acceptance by the city next month. So still have to construct Parts III and IV, and then Five, Six, and Seven. This is Part 8, which is to the north, which would be abutting Arlington Ridge, so it's several years out, we anticipate. Purpose for coming forward with the request, I think, was twofold, is it ties in with some of the infrastructure in the previous parts that I just mentioned, and I think they wanted to give some assurances to the neighbors at, in Arlington Ridge that this area would remain a single-family, which, which certainly I think everyone appreciates. We did have a good neighbor meeting on November 19th, talk about this. It was really well-attended, had 19 people there, and we talked about this development as well as an opportunity to talk about other area developments, such as the school district property and when roads and things like that were constructed. So I love those types of meetings because we can just get opportunity to speak with people about what their questions are. Somewhat relatedly, I know that Yorkshire is, is the connection has been made, so there is the general public using that. We, we received a couple of phone calls about that. I think there's, there's an element of newness with that, so we're going to chat with that about the traffic committee about that, but we do have people moving through there, and I do understand that where there's no traffic and people are moving slow, traffic coming through now is a change. So we're, we're talking about a few things about that, so hopefully I can, I can update you on that as well. But we, we anticipated that would be something that was new, people wouldn't be terribly excited about, but, but it is change. So just to get back on this item, no formal objections to request planning commission consider this item at December 3, and unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Russ? Do we have an applicant presentation or need one, Russ?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Bob Downer. I'm the attorney for Scanlon Family. I don't really have anything that I can add that I believe will provide more knowledge on this than has been provided by the staff and in the written report, but will be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. I think the justification for this, as presented by Russ, is exactly what the owners have in mind with respect to development of this and to assure persons in the area how this is going to be developed, even though in all likelihood, a final plat on this isn't going to occur for several years. But don't really have anything to add other than that, but would answer any questions that anyone might have.
I'll open that up. I don't know if we have any questions. Thanks for being here for it. Does anybody have any questions?
Mayor, I would just comment, Mr. Downs, we, so the chatter in Arlington Ridge has all been very positive. They understood after Russ's presentation that, you know, the developer didn't have to do this, they didn't necessarily need to do this, this far in advance, but this has been discussed even five, six years ago. You know, what is going to be there? How is it going to develop? And just want to pass along my appreciation to the Scanlon family and everyone who's involved here, and Russ, and the process that the city has put forth with those good neighbor meetings, this is a prime example of yielding good things. It's answering questions even when they're so far out in those, those partnerships and seeing these through to fruition in a positive manner. So I appreciate both of you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to my clients.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D then is first consideration of ordinance number 2025-02, and this is an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from ID interim development district to RS6 single-unit residence district. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by City, seconded by Smith. Are there any questions about this? Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Wason.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-0. Item 13 is Steiner Revised Developers Agreement in Platte, and item A is resolution number 2025-02, a resolution approving the amended and restated developers agreement for Steiner Medical Park subdivision, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Wason. Are there any questions on this one? Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Sittig.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B is resolution number 2025-03, and this is a resolution approving the amended final plat for Steiner Medical Park in North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Park. Any questions on this one? Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Sittig.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14 is Liberty Farm Access Easement, and this is resolution number 2025-04, a resolution approving the right-of-way access easement agreement between the City of North Liberty and Liberty Farm Homeowners Association. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wason, seconded by Sittig. Are there any questions about this one? Little unusual.
Just appreciate the explanation.
Yeah, well said. Thanks for that. And I know that we've been talking about this, and he's probably done that with one-on-one, so thanks, Ryan, for doing that. Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Smith.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 15 is Freedom Park Trail Improvement Project, and item A is resolution number 2025-05, a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing execution of the contract for the Freedom Park Trail Improvements Project, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Leibold. Any questions on that? Good question to Ryan already. All right. Tracy, roll call, please.
Leibold.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 16 is Watts rezoning, and this is our third consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2024-13, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from RS6 single-unit residence district to RS9 single-unit residence district. And this will wrap this one up for consideration, please.
I'll move third consideration.
Second.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Smith. We're all right with this one? Tracy, roll call, please.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17 is the Preserve Part 3B, and item A is resolution number 2025-06, a resolution approving the amended and restated developers agreement for the Preserve Part 3B, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Sittig. Do you have any questions on this one or comments? Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B is resolution number 2025-07, and this is a resolution approving the preliminary plat for the Preserve Part 3B, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Wason. Any questions on this one? Tracy, roll call, please.
Sittig.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 18 is Liberty's Gates Lots 7 and 8 rezoning. This is also a third consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2024-14, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from C1B general commercial district to C2 highway commercial district. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Smith. Any questions on this one? Tracy, we're rolling through it. Roll call, please.
Sittig.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 19 is Liberty's Gates Lots 7 and 8 preliminary site plan. This is resolution number 2025-07, a resolution approving the preliminaries plan for Auditor's Parcel 2002-08, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Wason. Questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Leibold.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 20 is our fire station number 2 rezoning, and this is also a third consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2024-15, an ordinance amending the zoning map district designation for certain property located in North Liberty, Iowa, from ID interim development district to P public district. Could I have a motion for this consideration and adoption?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Moved by Sittig, seconded by Wason. Questions on that? Tracy, let's move this one too, please.
Leibl?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 21 is North Liberty Clinic of Chiropractic Settlement Agreement. And this is resolution number 2025-08, a resolution authorizing settlement agreement with North Liberty Clinic of Chiropractic PLC. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Sittig, seconded by Leibl. Any questions?
Long time coming, a lot of work. Appreciate the staff.
I'll echo that. This is an effort and patience. Thank you, Grant.
Your pleasure.
Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Sittig?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Leibl?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 22 is 240th North Main Street Purchase Agreement. And this is resolution number 2025-09, a resolution authorizing the completion of a purchase of real property located at 240 North Main Street. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Leibl. You guys have any questions about this?
Ryan, has there been inspections done upon property?
Nope. We've declined inspections because property's going to come down.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Good question. Anything else? Paul?
More of a comment, just that there's a version of the purchase agreement that isn't completed.
That's not this.
What's that?
There was one that was included, I think, in the packet in confusion, but I can, I can verify that we have all the documents we need to move forward.
I just didn't know if it needed to be in there, but it's.
If it's, yeah, I can't speak to what's, what's in the packet, but I can, I can represent to you that we have all the documents that we need to move forward pending approval by this body. So it's all, it's all contingent on, on that.
We had, just to give you a little context there, we had a slew of documents come in late Friday. And so I think what happened is we put one in and didn't take one out. So that's why you saw, see multiple documents there. So that's, that's an oversight on our part. I apologize for that, so.
Any other questions? Tracy, we have a roll call, please.
Park?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Sittig?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Leibl?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 23 is Economic Development Agreement with Grow America. And this is resolution number 2025-10, a resolution approving a technical advisory services agreement between Grow America and the City of North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Park, seconded by Leibl. You guys have any questions about this?
Just these people seem to have some pretty good background in our local area.
They do. They work all over the country. They also work with the City of Iowa City. And if I could, I'd just take a second to say that, you know, we, with, with previous potential economic development projects, we haven't used a company like that this. A lot of times, in all cases, because they're pretty standard rebate agreements that we can work through with our bond counsel. In this case, we anticipate a larger request and, for incentives. And so we thought it would be prudent to have a third party look at some of the developers' potential or draft or projected, maybe is a better word, development cost to explain why they need this larger incentive. So these folks will do that work, evaluate it for us and bring back a recommendation to us. And then we will bring that information back to you folks and have a further discussion with the developer here.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just a comment. I'm glad to see that this is happening, that they're, you know, going to be looking this over. And I think it's worth the cost. So agree with my comment.
Thank you. I would agree. It's a great problem to have, been beating the economic drum for a long time. Great problem to have. Excited to see what we, what we learn.
Tracy, could we have a roll call, please?
Park?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Leibl?
Aye.
Sittig?
Abstained due to a conflict.
Wason?
Aye.
Motion carries, 4 to 1. Item 24 is Forever Green Road Roundabout 28E. And this is resolution number 2025-11, a resolution approving the 2080 agreement between the City of North Liberty, City of Tiffin, the City of Corleville, and Johnson County[1481.46]